All right, Jim, let me know when you're ready. I got your.
Yes.
Is this it? Is this it? I just want to say to this Wise guy one more thing. I collected thirty-six ballots myself, harvested and turned it, and all thirty-six of those people voted for Oak Hill. So leave me alone. Stop.
Nine, April.
He voted for each one as he turned it in, right?
Planning and zoning commission.
Over here in Berkeley, vote often.
Nothing off the top of my head.
Anybody want water? There's two there and I can get more.
So I'm ready.
You're set? Okay, all right. We'll call this meeting, a special meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Camden Hills, the Wednesday, April ninth, to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Teat.
Here.
Commissioner Lorario.
Here.
Commissioner Kopeck.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hopfensberger is absent. Chairman Frederick.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
And we also have village administrator Rooney, trustee liaison Muncie is not here, and Secretary Brown, of course.
As a reminder, if you want to turn your speakers on or your microphones on, help with the recording. Thank you. All right. We have a quorum. So let's see. Item number three, a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of March twenty-sixth. I think I had like one. No, I don't think it. Yeah, I had one tiny grammatical thing. Page four, second paragraph, Mr. Anderson. If you just go there, it says has a.
Had, okay.
The extra letter S. Just an extra letter.
Yeah.
Just remove the S. Okay. That was just a minor thing. I didn't know. Anybody else have anything else they want to?
I missed that. What was that?
It was just an extra letter in the sentence. It's grammatical.
Yeah.
But it was, your sentence starts with Mr. Anderson.
No. Move to approve.
All right. So I have a motion to approve as a.
I'll second.
Second. Can I have a voice vote to approve as amended? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And motion carries to approve. Thank you. Number four, public comment. Any comment tonight? Okay. Number five, the motion to approve the plat consolidation for Morton Estate. I believe that is in your packet. We, did you want to? Pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Would you like us to give a quick synopsis?
It's just a, it's a consolidation, not subdivision. Pretty simple. They want to build a house, kind of in the center of that. There's two separate lots. Really, if they didn't want to do it, we could consider it a zoning lot because it's under common ownership. But I think this is the correct way to go. And I don't have the big plat. I did catch a minor error on it. They had the name of this body incorrect. They called it the Plan Commission. It really should be Planning and Zoning Commission. So they're preparing that. I had a letter, email from the owners requesting it. We don't really have a formal application for it. But if we approve it tonight, then, you know, they would get the signatures on it, deliver it to us. I'd give it to you for your signature. And then, you know, we'd eventually get recorded once we had all the signatures on it. So.
Okay. So from staff, any concerns?
No.
No. It looks pretty straightforward to me.
It is. And depending, there's some easements there, but I don't think it's going to interfere with the house or anything. So.
I got a couple of questions. It looks like from the aerial view that there's a driveway.
Yeah.
Runs up along the east side of that, on that dotted line, east side of the five N one sixty lot. Is that going to be the access road to that property?
It is. And that was the first thing we checked out. And there is access easement to these properties back there.
Okay, because it looked like there was an easement down the middle of those other two lots. And so that's being removed or?
The easement down the middle of the other two lots, yeah. That, I think, is, well, they're changing the setback line. And. Yeah.
It looks like they aren't removing that easement access.
Yeah.
Between lots seven and ten.
Do you have a better map that shows? Because the one that shows the pins, it's not clear as to which is which. We talk about the red box, but there's several red boxes.
Yeah, it's the, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, the upper left-hand corner. Yeah. It's these two lots. Yeah, the upper left-hand corner.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's a lot.
There's two odd, yeah, there's two odd shaped lots, yes.
Yeah, that don't have any, any address on it.
Yeah, don't have a pin, or an address, yeah. Pin, but doesn't have an address on it.
And then they got the drainage easement there. Oh, I see. Certain block, you know, eight, lot. Eight, nine. And there is a lot one? No, or there's a lot one above.
No, that becomes lot one.
Becomes lot one.
Lot one.
Lot one of Morton Estate. Right. Yeah, I didn't, I just saw setback lines abrogated. And then they established obviously new ones.
Into one, yeah. There's, yeah.
Now, is, is the access, is that going to be a official road or is that just a driveway?
It's, it's not.
It's not.
A road under the township or.
Private road. Okay.
No, it's a, it's a drive, long drive.
Yeah.
So it's coming off Oak Hill?
Yeah. And it goes down.
Oak Hill Drive.
And it's, I mean, it's there now to access these two lots. It was put in, you know, whenever, years ago, and this was all subdivided. So there's, they have the access to it. That was the first question that came up, so.
I just had one comment.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you have any.
And it was just at the south end, there's existing, I guess, on lot eight, the existing lot eight. There's sort of like this L-shaped drainage easement that, without knowing what the easement provisions are, some easement provisions won't allow any paved surfaces and drainage easements. And the access road coming off from the south would have to cross that. That easement wasn't abrogated.
Right.
And depending on what the drainage easement language states, the driveway may or may not be allowed. I mean, that was.
Okay, good point.
Just something to just verify.
Yeah.
You know, and, I mean.
So you're talking about the one granted by Doc ending in six, eight, seven?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That was the only comment I had.
Okay, good catch, yeah.
All right. Anything else? Besides taking or checking that? So not hearing any other suggestions or comments or concerns. I get a motion to approve with the, with, how to word this? To check and verify that the drainage easement. But a motion pending that verification. Yes, Eric?
Motion.
Oh, okay. Okay. So motion to approve, motion to approve the plat consolidation.
So moved.
So Mr. Kopeck, second?
Second.
Mr. Teat, discussion further?
And then this creates a five hundred and five six, a five-point-five acre lot. When it says total area subdivision or on this map, I mean, how much, what's the acreage total when you put these two together?
Um, so I saw that too. Five-point-five six.
Yeah.
Because it says, you know, I see this one down there, so I just, it says area of subdivision. You think in subdivision, we're actually consolidation.
It's a one subdivision lot, basically.
But are they actually going to put re, put that together into one lot? Or they're just going to leave the two and build on it?
They're making it one lot.
They're going to change? You'd have, you'd have to, yeah. That's what I was asking you. You'd have to put that under one parcel.
Yes, sir. And, and under the title, they already say that, you know, Morton Estates is being a consolidation of lots eight and nine of Hunter's Hill, unit five, basically creating the one lot. Right.
So the title will be one lot.
Lot one. Lot one. Lot one of Martin Estates.
You want, I'm sure we have that. We have that in our, and you want that anyway.
Yes, we do.
For a purpose of taxes, for a purpose of utilities, right? Because I ran into a problem like that with a Shell gas station with two separate parcels.
You don't want that.
No.
And they wouldn't want it because they can do more.
Absolutely, correct.
That gives them more freedom.
Correct.
To build or?
To build and have accessory dwellings.
Yeah, especially when you're, when you're doing open space versus covered space.
Yes, sir.
All right.
That's advantageous for both the village and.
Correct.
Future.
So is, were you still looking for a second or you have a second?
I have a second. I just wondered if there are any further discussion questions or concerns? Otherwise, we'll take a vote, a vote. I'm just going to go for a voice vote.
Yeah.
So all those in favor of the approval of consolidation with the, upon verification of the easement? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, very good. Thank you for that, laying that out for us, Jim. That was to help us understand that more clearly. Okay. Number six. Motion to initiate a zoning text amendment regarding provisions of the maximum size accessory structures.
Could I be heard on that first? You may still spend time on this, but I'd like you to be aware of last night, the board meeting. There was not a consensus to move this to be studied. I believe it will get moved possibly when the new board is seated. They might have some issues with. We didn't put a ceiling on lots that are three, four, and five acres. And the size of structure could get very large, extremely large, like bigger than the Wees Barn up at Bulcom. Like where you see the asphalt, that could all be building the way it's currently, not what you sent, but what the board modified to try to help the two and three acre lots and smaller. Without a ceiling, it gets very large. And that may be an issue to be addressed. But at this point in time, you could still do it, but the board is not asking you formally. We thought they would refer it to you, but they didn't. So you could just put this in abeyance for a month or two months.
And if I could add, so our ordinance.
Yes.
Says a zoning amendment can be initiated by the owner of a property, which is not the case here, or the village board. Essentially, they would initiate it and then they would give it to kind of direction from you. Or it can be initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you know, you can initiate any amendment independently of what the board does, including this. Or you can take, take and decide, well, the board doesn't seem interested. You know, are we spinning our wheels? Whatever you want to do, so.
Quick question would be, when is the new board going to be seated?
First meeting in May, May sixth.
Okay. So it's not a long time to wait.
And you've got plenty on your agenda with the complaint.
Yeah, I don't think it's a difficult one, but it's.
One question I wanted to.
But it's a no-brainer.
Is there, is it, how do you verify the size of your septic field? Are these all recorded? I mean, not all are recorded, probably, that are in the older lots, older properties. But so are the septic fields well-defined so you can say that, okay, you can't build on the septic field?
Sure.
And then is there any issue about backup for that septic field? And do you mean that it fails?
Yeah, there is. They're supposed to. The county requires a second field.
Yeah. Well, a hundred percent.
Right. So if it fails, does that mean you have to, you have to tear down your building? If you're on a small, to be able to put in a second field, short of bringing in new dirt or something if it's a.
Well, there's supposed to be room for a hundred percent. Well, at least the newer properties. There's supposed to be, that's why the county went up to acre and a half on lots.
Yeah.
So there was enough room to do a hundred percent expansion.
And it's all, it's all on the approval of the county, you know, the health department or.
The health department.
Health.
Health.
That has to be approved on your original construction plat, so.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess maybe what I'm thinking is, is there a caveat that you could warn people before you expand, make sure you know you still have enough room to replace your septic field like that?
Sure.
Wouldn't that be part of a permit process?
It's part of the building permit process. It's not really a zoning issue. It's a building.
Yeah. We're kind of off, off. I mean, I understand the concern, but I think it's not really related to what we're, we're talking about.
I will note, I'm meeting with the county health department on Tuesday regarding septic fields, regarding complaint, actually. So I'll ask. I mean, I have these questions too, and I don't know if it's actually done and the procedure that it's done. I do know they look at and approve all the septic fields, but just the procedure that transpires, so.
For what it's worth, I did, and I won't, I won't hand them out, but I did, I did some options. You know, so when we do, this does come to us of different options to look at, to, to change that.
To maybe place a ceiling.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not to make our meeting longer, but I still don't think it would hurt for us to have a discussion and send them some thoughts on, you know, what we think. I mean, I don't know, that would hurt. They're not formally asking us, but they may be.
We have that option, we can do that.
I mean, they may be thankful that we sent our opinion.
No, not really.
I would just say, I guess my concern.
I thought they would too, but they weren't.
My thought would be that if the board is changing, let's, let's get the, let's let that board in and then let them decide whether they want to take a bite of this.
But I do think, to Neil's point, it might be good if you've already done some work to hand that out. And then at a future meeting, you guys have a running start already.
I can, you can hand it out if you want. There's, I mean, this, you know, I'm trying to spend a little bit of time. It's not as, as complete and exact as maybe Mr. Brown would have done, but I've just tried to borrow and steal off of what he did and just.
Yes, from your take. From your first take at this, when you did have a ceiling.
Yeah, so really quick.
All the same or?
No, there's, it's a handout, sorry. It should be the same. So I just gave one for Jim down there.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Mark, if you wanted one, thank you.
All.
But anyway, you know, the original two thousand and seven ordinance under option A is like nine hundred and, up to four-point-seven-five acres and nine hundred acres. That was, that was the two thousand and seven ordinance, and there was nothing above that. So what we recommended from the planning, from the zoning commission when we did this zoning ordinance was basically, originally it was one percent or five hundred feet, whichever is greater. It ended up going to two percent or nine hundred feet, the board, and the board changed it.
Two and a half.
Well, the board changed it to three and something or so.
Yeah.
Anyway, the idea, they're all fairly similar. But if you, one percent is pretty easy to do the math. If you go to ten acres, you know, you just, instead of forty-three, five, sixty in ten acres, one percent is just, you know, move the decimal. So it's four thousand three hundred and fifty-six. So it's pretty straightforward. So, but it was eighty-seven hundred or eighty-seven hundred and twelve. If you look at what was in the two thousand, twenty-two-three ordinance, it was nine hundred, eighteen hundred, and then twenty-eight hundred was the, was the max. So that, that is one option. But option B, basically, is you just try to graduate it. Instead of just saying, you go from two to two-point-two-five acres, you go from nine hundred to eight hundred. You just, it just goes a percentage. And a percentage of, of an acre is four hundred and thirty-five feet, so a little over a hundred feet. So it's about, options B and C are fairly similar. It's just that you're using percentages or actually numbers. So option C, you just go up a hundred feet per quarter acre. So option C, you would end out at forty-one hundred feet, forty-one hundred feet. And option B, one percent would be forty-three hundred and fifty-six feet. So it's a little bit less. But then option D, I just picked an arbitrary number because the maximum they had in one of the plans was twenty-eight eighty. So I just said, well, it's just stop at three thousand. So option D says, okay, let's just go up by a hundred feet and then stop at a three thousand. So those are just things to consider, you know? And how do you want to do it? And this is not the only way to do it. But at least there's some options there on how to look at it. Some are easier to see in the mind if it's just a hundred feet per acre, which is roughly a percentage. Then you guys say, well, what's the largest you want on a, on a property? What, how big do you think it should be? And is there a maximum?
Should there be a ceiling on three, four, and five acres? Because right now, we did the math, just Alex and I at the building department, and it was almost twice the size of the Wees Barn on a five acre. The one that's up at the traffic circle?
Yeah.
Imagine twice that size under the current ordinance as they adopted it.
I, I think we, it was an oversight, was you were looking at numbers and.
Well, the idea was to help the one and a half and the two and a half acre parcels.
Yeah.
I think we just got too wrapped up going down.
Yeah.
But if you're in there, it is what it is, right? So that's adopted. So the question is, what do you want? And so that's something to look at, something to think about. So there's different ways it's being presented. One is just strictly in numbers, and the other one's by percentage. And it doesn't have to be nine hundred, you could change it. But anyway, that's something to think about. I, I, we can, if there's a, well, because that's what we can do. Think about it. Or we can just say, let's just go ahead and initiate something to say, here's what we think. Here's some options. And then you pick it up when you're ready, so.
Yeah. If I, if I remember right, we were talking, we were talking about the size. It was not just one building, but it was, you know, allowed for multiple buildings. And that's where all of a sudden you'd run over the, you know, the nine, the old limits. Yep, if they want, I mean, nine hundred square feet, that's, that's a thirty-by-thirty building.
Right.
And if you got ten acres and you put two thirty-by-thirty buildings on there, you know, that, nobody notices it. But if you do that on a single lot, so that's, I think where we're coming from. But we've got to keep in mind that it was, you know, total building under roof, total area under roof, not just, you know, a single built building.
But the board talked about, they talked about up to ten acres?
Yeah, Eric, well, I'm not sure.
I was thinking it was, I thought it was only the five.
Well, that's.
They're breaking.
So the two thousand and seven ordinance was up to five.
Yes.
The two thousand and seven ordinance was up to five.
Yeah. That's the real issue, because when you get above five, it's a farm.
Well, that's what I, so, I mean, this may not pertain as much to a large apartment.
Except.
There's a lot of people, horses, and, you know, and we want that.
Yes, and I think you should put some stipulation if it's a horse stable that, that you don't want to skinny them down possibly on a horse stable. But somebody building a two thousand square foot house on a five acre parcel and then building a nine thousand or ten thousand square foot barn dominium where they're going to store their RV, two boats, and six sports cars, then you have a small little house that may or may not be attached to this huge, think of twice the size of what's at the traffic circle. That's what somebody could do now, damn near, on a five acre.
On a five acre.
Yes.
In one aspect.
Do you care or not care as a village in what that looks like?
Well, I mean, and that's also another thing.
Freedom versus.
It's, I don't know about, I don't know if it's, but I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, for your smaller lots, actually, the challenge is for that, let's say it's a neighborhood, the subdivision's certain size, you start getting any bulk at all. And it's going to really take away any sense of openness. It's, you know, because like if everybody wants to, you know, statistically, probably not, though probably with, you know, with economics, maybe that, you know, everybody could have time for some self-storage. But that would be probably the biggest challenge for the smaller lots as well. How does that affect that specific subdivision's look, I suppose? Or that, because that is.
Yeah, I think that's, I think I want to put it before you that it could come. I don't expect you to spend a lot of time tonight, but think about it. Because in May, late May or early June, it'll probably be back to you in some aspect. Or you could initiate it.
I think I'd just soon wait, that'd be my preference.
Yeah.
Everybody else?
We'll talk about it.
Well, do we have one more meeting before May?
You do.
We'll, we'll talk about it at the end, but yeah, we're, we're. It could still come up.
I guess from my. So you want, from my perspective, I think I'd like to wait for the board, you know, to direct it, direct us. And then maybe they have some suggestions as far as how they'd like to see it broken down or what kind of caps.
Or with the caveat, we're worried about under five acres, or we're worried about three to five, or we're worried about, we don't care about.
Multiple buildings, barns, I mean, is it stables? Is it garages? You know, what, what is the concern? And then also, you've got, you know, all the, within subdivisions, you know, all the, you call them, homeowners associations have bans on a lot of accessory buildings anyway. So it's not like it's going to, they're going to pop up overnight just because we changed the limit.
That's true.
See, that's what we need AI for, to just say, okay, how many, how many places could you do this? And how many can't you do it?
All right. So I. I would like to move to table item six to a time and, time and date indefinite. All right. So I have a motion to.
Second.
Table. And the second by Mr. Kopeck. All those in favor, I say aye to motion to the table. All opposed? Okay, so the motion carries the table until, as in indefinite. All right. Item number seven, review of the correction to draft chapter three, as discussed last time. And then move on from there. So what I saw, I've been like some feet that we're understanding.
I am too. I'm going to shut my mouth.
Yeah, it's been that way.
Yeah.
I didn't have a whole lot, of course, going from the beginning again, chapter one, chapter two, and then basically getting to chapter three just to do a brief review. I did have one comment and just maybe just help recage my understanding of this. So if we're going to page thirty, which is the mission statement and the vision, the hill, the vision statement, which is before, just before chapter three, so about page thirty with the red barn, or not the red barn, but the train station or community center.
I'm on page thirty. Which, which page thirty? Is this of the PDF or?
It's page twenty-eight of the PDF or page thirty. It's along with the American flag and the water, the community center. Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's your findings, but so if you go to the next page, it's a title that kind of gets me. It says, "Community character." And I get it, it's kind of describing community character, right? But we haven't even got into chapter three yet. So I don't know if this was a placeholder. Many have demographics and charts. But then after that, chapter three starts. So I'm just kind of wondering about the placement of that. Is that, should that be, should be like right under chapter three, principles, goals, and strategies? Or, or is that, or is it chapter three start? Does, does chapter three start with community character? You know what I'm saying? Or do we need to re-term, change the terminology of community character at the beginning? Because what happens is, as you go to page.
Chapter two.
Forty, it says community character, and that's, then it goes right through all the goals and strategy and everything in community character again on page forty-two of the documents.
So we're talking page twenty-nine and then bumping down to forty-two?
Well, no, well, actually, it'd be page, the community character page is the one. So it'd be, so it's twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one is the flag.
Yep.
So it's thirty-two and three. That's the one, it says, "Community Character" there. And it's kind of like the introductory, you know, giving the vision, you know, feel of it all and everything. But we haven't even started chapter, chapter three yet.
It needs to bump down, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, you, chapter two is history, right? That's the topic, is chapter two is history.
Uh, yeah, it says, "Regional and Local Context," is what the title is for chapter two. So it does, but you're correct, because it starts off with the history of Camden Hills. So it really is.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
So it really is, it really is history.
Okay.
And I get what it's trying to do, it's saying, "Community Character," but to me, it was confusing then, when all of a sudden I start community character, you know, four pages later.
Three pages later.
So I, I understand that what you're trying to do is to say, hey, here is the, here's the overall feel of the community, and here the demographics, and explaining what the, you know, what it is. But it, it just seems, all of a sudden, now we have a title, chapter two, after that.
Right.
And it just kind of seems out of place.
So the original twenty-twelve document addressed community character under chapter two.
Okay.
And then when they went into chapter three, section A, community character, they essentially repeated all of the stuff from.
All right.
Chapter two. So what I did, I see your point, what I did, to reduce that redundancy, I eliminated that, most of the discussion of community character in chapter three. And this is revised, what, so, I get what you're saying, maybe that is better, that, you know, I should have slashed it from chapter two and retained the discussion of community character under section A in chapter three.
Yeah, it's a couple of options here. I mean, I'm not, it's just, just to be, one more small thing, and I'll let, I don't know.
Might flow better than that one.
Yeah, is, it, you could actually, instead of saying, "Community Character," because that would threw me off, because the community character was there, and then four pages later, "Community Character."
Yeah.
You could just retitle that, saying like, how about the character of Camden Hills, or something like, or you just move all of that down to three. That was my suggestion. Yeah, Mr. Kopeck?
I'm judging the way this is, is flowing right now, I would say that, you know, community character, or whatever you want to call it, could be its own chapter with all the demographics. Because now we've got the history, and now we've got current, the current description, you know, community character.
That would be an option, I guess.
So we'd have a, a chapter on history, or move that to an introduction, maybe.
Right.
And then a, a chapter, that's an idea, that's a good option, too, yeah.
Demographics and charts, now that becomes its own chapter.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like it would be illogical to stand alone, again.
Right.
I was just gonna suggest, you know, you have Camden Hills' mission statement, Camden Hills' vision statement. Rather than call it community character, just call it Camden Hills. Then it kind of flows, and then you've got your mission, your vision, and now you got.
Yeah.
Camden Hills, and then you go into the principles and goals and strategies, and then that way.
That's a clear, quicker way to fix it.
Just, just a thought.
It's an engineering way to fix it. Uh, simple.
Yeah, so I, I don't have a, I'm not opposed to either one, if you use maybe another chapter, or do, that'd be something, but it, I could see it also flowing, too. Just saying, okay, yeah, here's, here's our mission statement, vision statement, and then who are we? You know, as a community, who are we as a community, and then you give that information, and then, and then your goals and strategies, so. Either, either way.
I think it was probably put that way, just because these all look similar, you know, one to three.
But.
To Chris's point, then, change the type. I mean, that, I mean, that does flow.
Yes, it does.
Just retitle that.
Just, it says, "Saying Community Character."
How about "Community Essence"?
Or just Camden.
The essence of the community.
Because, uh, community character is more about, it's not so much about the, I, I.
Yeah, I, I sort of appreciate.
I, I, what I did was, I put in replacement, replacement words for community character, and then I read, it said, "Community fabric, spirit, community identity, and essence." And the only one that leans towards the actual nature and structure of the community is community essence, captures the core nature or fundamental qualities of the community. The rest of them are all, all kind of lean towards more the people than the, the structures and so forth. And when I read that, the first thing, it says, "The physical built environments of the vision, village of Camden Hills" are referred to as being rural, semi-rural, so it's all about the area.
Yeah.
Look at this guy, using that little hand, he has a computer.
And I haven't even started with the AI stuff, you know, I do that, man, and.
It's hard to argue that logic.
Just a thought.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for my brain chip.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, community essence.
Whatever you want, I mean, these are all decent ideas.
Fits what Chris was saying, actually.
Because you're saying you just Camden Hills, or community essence, but you kind of keep it the same. All right, preference? It's not, it's not the final word.
New chapter, different name, or different location within this chapter?
I always, I think it goes, flows better with community essence, and just keep it, and then have you know, chapter break.
Let's, let's start with that. We can always revisit, we're gonna review this again.
All right.
But let's just change it to community essence for right now, and have that, see how that all flows, all right?
Damn computers.
So that would be a, a chapter, then?
Um, not right now. Uh, I, we can make it, but I think we're just gonna change the title for right now.
That's, okay, then whatever.
Because we have mission statement, vision statement, community essence, so it's just kind of talking.
And then we go into the demographics.
Yeah, and we go into the demographics, and then we'll start off, okay, chapter three. Okay, very good. All right?
And.
Yes.
It's, it's a minor thing. I know they say Wasco and associated with town hall. The town hall technically was the township hall. It wasn't, Wasco had a town hall.
Yeah.
So, you know.
But where was that? Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Oh, it's just under the, uh, character in that, saying that Wasco, not a corporate, uh, it's under the topic.
Oh, is that the black and white picture?
And it's, yeah, it's just above that, it's the second paragraph, and it's describing Wasco, you know, and Incorporated Hamlet, et cetera. And it mentions Wasco remains in the form of the mid-century homes, old church, post office, the town hall, and the farmer train depot. The, the town, we, Wasco did not have a town hall in and of itself.
But they had, they had a community center next to the church. But they didn't have a town hall.
Yeah.
All right.
That, it's just, it, I mean, I'd like to see the town hall mentioned. I do want to see the town hall mentioned.
Yeah, in the context, Wasco is.
And the nearby Camden Town Hall, you could say. And the nearby Camden How, Town Hall, maybe you say something like that. So, and all, because otherwise, people might be looking for, well, where's, you know, the historic surviving town hall in Wasco?
Yeah, in the context, you're using Wasco in the sentence before, and Wasco in the sentence afterwards, so you're, you're pushing. So why don't we just change town hall to Camden Town Hall?
I can, yeah.
Yep. Just add that word in there, you know, if you can. Because it's talking about other option, other things, or.
All right.
Other comments? I'm not starting at chapter three now, any other comments there yet? So, chapter three, principles, goals, and strategies. So I think we went over a lot of this before, and I'm just looking, uh, we're just looking to see if there's, uh, whether, or any other errors or changes. Granted, as we get to page fifty-one in the PDF, or in page thirty-eight on the computer, uh, computer page, that is what, it gives you a feel of what it's gonna look like, and how you've got your vision statement, and then your, kind of your introduction, and your goals, your strategies, and then, uh, starting when it goes to a single page, that has just not been updated into the form that it will to get the next one, and everything else. But the, the text is all there. So that's, the difference is, that's why that's there right now, so. There's a lot of rewriting, so he'll get, he'll get the pictures and all that kind of stuff in there. So I don't have any changes or corrections, uh, now I'm into this page, uh, principles, goals, and strategies, where it's a single page, and just going through those, and I don't have any corrections through a, uh, open space or a community character. I don't see any notes underwater resources. I do have a minor comment on pa, on, so, strategy C-six, Charlie six, the very bottom, uh, which would be page forty-seven of the electronic PDF. It doesn't have a page number on it. Anyway, strategy C-six at the bottom, it's still like that question in there about this King County or the conservation, I still have their own.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And yes, they do.
Yeah, we, we did.
We did, okay, so you could just delete that.
So, I'm gonna, you say forty s, page.
Forty-seven of electronic?
Electronic.
C-six, yeah. There's no page number on it.
Yeah, I don't know, I thought I had, it's, I got little.
Without page number on the actual page.
C-six.
But it was strategy Charlie six.
Strategy, strategy C-six.
Strategy.
Strategy, yeah, C-six.
Implement water conservation.
But anyway, we answered that question last time, so we'll just have to remove that.
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, food and farming, I don't see any comments that I have under food and farming. And, um, mixed commercial uses, I don't have, but we do have some red line here on this. That's the page with the red lines, looks like we got rid of a paragraph and added a different one. And I think this is actually the explanation of the difference between the village center and the town center, which is probably a good, good addition, to make sure that we have that. So there's no confusion. Whether we include that or not, that's a whole different thing, but.
I'm happy with it.
Yeah.
Viewed as a, as a potential.
All right, um, next under, uh, says G. Jared, you got something to, are you thinking, contemplating?
I'm just looking at the. Yeah, I just get worried about predestination.
Yep. Uh, my, my, my thought is to leave it in there, we can still discuss this, I mean, and get the final, uh, final document and look at it and decide whether we want to actually, before we forward it on, uh, whether we want to include it, not include it, have it as appendix or whatever. Um, but I think for right now, well, I'd like to keep it in there, and then, and then at least let the board make an option if they want to have it or not. But we will have a recommendation to them, uh, whether we think it should stay in or not. But I think it'd be something that, um, discussed, and I would, I would say, the, the board should have an, an option to look at that, would be my opinion.
I, I agree. I think it'd be short-sighted to leave it out, because it's a fact. There's no denying it, it's a fact. It's a fact about where the town center was and everything, it's a fact, it existed, it was, thought that that could be it. The comprehensive plan is insane. We're all for it to be another town center, it's just, it's a fact that that was where it was. So I, I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
I mean, it was the opinion of, you know, all the workshops that came out, you know, both for the comp plan and, you know, the town center plan. Those workshops had community input, and that was the direction they were, they offered, so.
And I, I think, too, we can also add, if we, when we do forward this plan, we can also add our opinion, and we can take a vote on who wants to keep it in or take it out, and we can just say, here, this, this is an area of contention or an area of deep discussion, and, uh, this will be something that you should focus on, because there was some disagreement. Uh, we, we're not unanimous consent, uh, you know, or something along those lines. We can add that as our comment, uh, to, to, to the board. So they could focus in on that, it wouldn't be, so, but my, 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 my note would be to, to leave it in there for now.
Some, in effect, you could, so, you can submit it to the board with a minority opinion saying, one way, whatever, one way or the other.
Yeah, what the concerns are, predest, predesting development as something we don't, we may not want, or, or, so. I don't know what words in their mouth, but whatever they feel. All right, so continuing on, um, in these, uh, under E, E, strategy E-four, I just had a comment, and I don't know if this is the right place to put it or not, um, but it, it does kind of relate a little bit to the town, um, town center, you know, actually, the village center as well, but, uh, and we had discussions slightly before about, there's kind of a missing, there's no town square, you know, in our village, there's no town square, there's no really community meeting area, there's no, you know, park, or, you know, gazebo, or whatever, that we can, you know, as a community, come to and meet, and so, um, and, yeah, can be made. My point would be, as a strategy, I think, would be a suggestion of, hey, that should be in mind, when there is a development in this area. Especially, I think it would be probably better to be in the village center area, or adjacent to it. If you had that community center here, it'd be my opinion, that if you had something like that, then you, that would bring people fit to downtown. And, uh, so that's kind of what.
We missed the boat.
Yeah.
We still kind of have one.
I mean, we have the, you know, where, uh, pork fields and all that, only, we got the rotunda, we got the lot in the middle.
Yeah.
You can trim down some of that island in the middle, make it a, a center like a park. It needs one central building at one end. So I mean, it's kind of our stump, our town center park.
Yeah. I, I just don't know what the future is, or what's gonna happen, so I'm just saying, I think it just should be a strategy. I think that is, that's something we would be, would be valuable, and hey, you know, if, if something comes up, and an opportunity comes up, I think we should look at having some type, you know, some type of a, you know, a town square slash, you know, community, uh, you know, if it's a community center, or, or a community gathering area, uh, so that if something did come, then, hey, that would be in our plan to say, look, this is something that we want, uh, as a, as a village. And, uh, so, I, I don't, I don't know if that's, this is the right place to put it, under strategy E-four, or have it add another one or something, but, and I'm not saying it has to be done, I'm just saying that if it's a strategy, then why don't you consider?
I think under E-five, make another E-five.
I think it should be there.
It, it's just bad, yeah.
For strategy and thought.
Right, and then you can point to it in your comprehensive plan, if something came forward, and say, look, we'd like a, you know, kind of a, a community gathering area, you know, so, um, it makes sense to me to be more in this area, but maybe it's not, maybe it's somewhere else, but, you know, that would be my, my thought, so. Do you have any problem with adding some, the generic? Yeah.
Be a goal.
A goal, yeah, well.
We don't know where, but it's a goal.
Yeah, so make it, would you make it a goal, then? So a goal would be to add, or?
I think there should be a goal.
Yeah, okay, yeah, make it a goal. Make it, make it, goal E-five, goal E-five.
All right.
All right.
Okay. And I'll probably have some corresponding strategy, I don't know what else to say.
Well, any future redevelopment, development should consider.
Right, exactly, something like that.
Any, yeah, money.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, any future development or redevelopment should consider, you know, because maybe somebody's redeveloped, and I was like, well, I have a redeveloping that, and they want to do all this, and maybe we could, you know, get, carve a little place out for, for a community, you know, gap in there.
Or a swap.
Or, yeah, a swap, yeah, right, right. Okay, that was my input, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of land being cleared right next door.
Well, that's what I would, we missed the boat. See, we should have done something when Jim still owned it. But it's too bad that happened, and I didn't catch it sooner.
All right, homes and neighbors, F, I think we are, I did not have anything there. Transportation accessibility, we, uh, the red line there was just getting rid of all those stuff that just keeps getting. Right. Changed all the time, so that's good. Uh, the rioting cane program was there. I don't know if it's just a holding place or whatever, but there's that, um, cryptic box, which is meant to be something, I'm not really sure what it is.
Uh, I think that was complete streets.
Is that complete streets?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. I just wasn't sure what it was. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, and then I see down to goal, that's next, uh, red line I saw was G-eight, was just funding opportunities, looks like, as a strategy, if they want to do some of this stuff. It's been fine, never hurts to get some funding. H, community services facilities and infrastructure, looks like we, uh, goal H-five was added.
Yeah.
Uh, sustainable effects is alternative energy, water management, reduction of light pollution integrated in.
I'll just say the red, I, I don't know why I wrote it that way, it's, it's, or maybe it's just, I gotta rewrite that sentence.
Okay.
Start, start with seek, I guess, instead of a kind of a goofy.
Yes, I think that would be.
All right, so I'll rewrite that.
Okay.
The ability to say.
Okay. Uh, then the next page, H-three, I think that one's fine, and it does utilize the dark, we talked about that, just utilize the dark sky, principles and village lighting ordinances to mitigate light pollution, so.
Okay.
All right. All right, so that's just kind of the review of three, so that should be able, should hopefully get that ready for final production. And then on to land, uh, four, land use, which is a fair amount of rewriting, as Jim had said. Reducing some redundancies, and then getting rid of the term managed change, and just using land use.
I kept farm at.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Good.
Comment in the, in the beginning, you start out, land use, you know, is the term, and then you get into the next paragraph, you talk about land cover. Could you put a description or definition for land cover? I mean.
Is there a definition?
Is that a manhole cover, or is it, you know?
I don't remember.
Just something to, to define it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I started, I didn't, okay, land use differs from land cover.
He said it's different, but.
Yeah. I mean, after you think about it for a while, it's obvious, but the first, first person reading this, it doesn't.
Yeah, the, I gotta add, after the last sentence in there, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so what I would do is, after the first paragraph, when you say land use is the term, just say, land cover is the term.
Right.
And then you could use that one. Land use differs from land cover.
Right.
So in between those two paragraphs, if you just added a description of land cover.
Then also.
Might be an option, maybe.
And in the second paragraph, I would recommend putting a semi-colon after awaiting development in the second to the last sentence, and then not, then create, you know, the land cover will be the same, you know, paragraph as before, so. Just put, put a semi-colon there, you make it two sentences, and it's, you kind of get lost, reading it.
Right there, I see what you mean, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, semi-colon, and.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, um. Moving on to the bottom of the page, uh, I'm not sure, I don't see any data, but just that your comment, Mr. Brown, was, where did the, where did this data and figures of acreage come from, CMAP, if so, when, to be clarified? Uh, I'm not sure which data, there's some hieroglyphics almost above that section, I'm not sure if that was what the data was meant to be, or.
It's AI.
So I can't really comment, because I don't know what, what data you were using, or referring to.
Yeah, I just, that was more of a note to myself, because I just didn't have time to, to figure that out. I mean, I do think it came from CMAP, or maybe the predecessor NIPC, if it's that old.
Yeah, but what, what, what data, are they talking about, like, how many homes are in the area, or what?
No, there was, there was, um, they had. No, there was, there was, um, they had percentages of land uses, so.
Oh, okay.
Twenty percent of the village is agricultural, I'm making this up.
Yeah, yeah, but for example.
Forty percent is agricultural, forty percent is residential, two percent is industrial, things like that. I just wanted to know, was it more to note to see if there's more current?
Yeah.
Figures, I think it's C map has it, yeah.
I would guess my C map, I'd have a greater value than.
And I think, um.
They probably still have that updated from 2020.
Yeah, and I think on their website, they have a more current one, because they, you know, they went to the 2050 plan. And I think you can zoom in and you can get your community land cover, we need to update. It was more of a note to myself to update that than it was.
Yeah, I was like, what data, I don't know what data we're talking about.
But that's what I, that's.
Okay, yeah, I was, C map, I know they do all kinds of data like that, so that would be the, um, and then the, uh.
Note to self.
Need to insert data here, okay, there, that's another, another one, okay. Okay, um, I think, let, and let me get, Mr. Brown, he can just make sure I got this right. So we have an existing, uh, land use map, all right? This is the current one, you know, it, it just happened to be in the comprehensive plan. And it has a certain handful or more of land use categories, and this is what you're describing here, right?
Right, so the, the titles themselves, I did, did not change. There was no description of what those were, so I tried to add those.
Okay, okay.
So there was nothing that said what is residential, I mean, maybe it's, it's obvious, but I think some of these, you'll need to be having some clarification. And then on the future land use map, I might be getting ahead of you, but the future land use map added some new, some additional categories than what's on the existing land use map, and they actually deleted commercial, which I don't.
Okay, I got you now.
But that's what, that was, was going on.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I, I guess, how do you want to, how do you want to apply this? Because it.
Yeah, so.
It says existing and then future, so we want to have an, well, obviously you want to have an existing land use map, right?
Right.
The question is, do you, do you want to have the same number of categories? Should they match, should the legend map, lap, match? I guess maybe not, because I guess you could have different land uses. But you'd, you'd think that they would be quite similar, but they seem quite different.
Yeah, and I, I, not sure.
Because I'm, one's got like all kinds of railroads and Olson Airport and, uh, you know.
Well, that one has, that has the same, there's seven.
Well, it's got the green infrastructure, regulated green infrastructure on it.
I'm sorry, which, which map are you, you're talking?
Well, I'm sorry, this is, this is actually from the, this is from the current 2012.
Right, I got that.
It's the, it's on page sixty-six and sixty-nine, which is the future land use plan.
Right.
And the existing land use plan.
Yes.
Figure eleven, so.
It's in twenty-three, too.
Oh, is it twenty-three? Okay, all right.
So, yeah, the future land use map, they added agriculture, so they had, they had something similar to agriculture in the, in the, uh, so they had agriculture and rural residential, that was on the current land use map. They changed that to agriculture. Then they added conservation neighborhood, so the intention of that was any new areas that perhaps we would annex or within our boundaries that would be developed would be conservation neighborhood. So the conservation design where you have smaller lots and you have more.
More open space, yeah, so you open ten houses.
And then they, and then they also added a mixed use category. But then they deleted commercial, which I found odd.
Yeah.
If I understood it correctly.
Yeah.
And.
Well, I'm trying to think if that goes back to the fact we weren't looking to create commercial areas.
Right.
You know, we're trying to keep semi-rural residential, and if you just keep adding more commercial, more commercial, then what the hell is, if you have the semi-rural, you know, description?
Right.
I mean, if we're just another town, that's fine, but I do think that that's what, uh, people just voted on, uh, in the open space referendum, for example.
Yeah, so they, so this is what they wrote, and I, I highlighted this in red and deleted it, because I, I think in some ways it needs reworking. Commercial land uses, which are typically designated for specific areas on land use plans, are not identified on the future land use plan. Well, first of all, we have commercial areas now, so they should, they should remain. I mean, that's, you shouldn't eliminate that entire cat, category.
It's a zone, it's what the zone.
Right. I, I mean, I understand that you may not want to designate undeveloped areas for commercial, I get that, but to remove it entirely from the map, I think is inappropriate. They say rather, commercial uses that are appropriate to the existing character and land use context along primary and secondary roads may be allowed in areas designated as future conserv, conservation neighborhoods, as described above. So I, 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 I think what they're saying is if you had a conservation neighborhood, and if that included some, like, I don't know, a dry cleaning shop or something, then you just roll, I don't, I don't, I don't understand.
Or is that where they're saying, well?
Ag business.
Yeah. Their coffee shop.
There's those overlays.
Yeah.
Which I never, we never really got into that in depth. But there were these overlays where the idea is, okay, if this is a agricultural sort of overlay for an area, you might allow ag business that supports that agricultural activity in that particular.
But that's in the zoning ordinance, that's all, that's all part of the zoning ordinance.
Pardon?
That's, that's part of the zoning ordinance, so that would, that would take care of that, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way I keep reading this is that when, when you see the proposed land use, that those categories seem to be more, you know, generally designated, you know, for, you know, for, for those category, those three categories. So, I mean, in that, following that rationale, I think we should say mixed use slash commercial, because those, that implies where you would have commercial, because mixed use does imply commercial.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So if we wanted to just call that commercial slash mixed use, then that, you know, pretty much clarifies that those areas are going to have commercial in them, whereas you just say mixed use, well, what is that?
Maybe that's what they did, or that was the intention.
I think that was the intent, but it, it kind of, you know, got lost in the, you know, translation.
But we have large areas here that are strictly commercial that really aren't mixed use. If you wanted to designate it as mixed use on a map, I mean, you'd have to update the zoning.
But for the, for the, for the future land use, I think that would be an appropriate designation, mixed use slash commercial.
No.
Especially down near the future planning area of the Fox station.
Right, I mean, th- those centers are going to be, you know, commercially, you know, magnets, so.
Or mixed use.
Yeah, mixed use, but it's.
Not strictly commercial.
Isn't it, isn't it wise to actually do that, so that you have a targeted area, so that it doesn't bleed, bleed into?
Residential.
Residential, agricultural.
Yeah.
Open areas.
Yeah, and you, you pick intersection, major intersections, train station, you know, those areas are going to be where you're going to find mixed use.
Yeah, I, I think for me, I need to take a step back and just say, okay, okay, I got two maps, and these two maps will be, or some variation of these maps will be included in it. So we have, we have an existing land use plan, and then we're gonna have a future land use plan. Looking at what I see from the 2012, they are, I'm very, it's very confusing.
It is.
It is, they are not, I should look at this one, and it should be very, very similar, when I say this one, I'm saying the existing land use plan. I look at it, if I flip over and take the future, it should be just little pieces that, that, that should change. It's a, it's a totally different map.
It is, and it, I just, it made my head, yeah, made my head spin, and then I kind of.
So, so I think we have to try to at least agree that we're gonna get a, a existing land use map and the future land use map being fairly similar in the number of categories that they use.
And it should match our recent zoning code.
Yes.
And, and typically, yeah, typically in a comprehensive plan, they all have a current land use map and a future land use map. So the existing land uses, on the current land use map that is, if you, if you are satisfied with that and you, you don't contemplate, or you're not, you're not seeking any change for the, whatever the time horizon of the plan is, that's gonna look the same, right? So if we're satisfied that this area is commercial, it should stay commercial. If you want to change it to mixed commercial, I'm, I'm okay with that, but we, you know what I mean? So all of those colors should essentially remain the same. If you want to break, you know, residential down a little finer tooth, that, I, I could see that, but I couldn't make, I couldn't line, like you said, when I put them side by side, it's, they're like two totally different things, and it's really confusing.
It's very, very confusing.
I didn't know what their goal was when they did that.
Yeah, I, I don't either, so, I guess I'm not the only one, I, you know, and if there's a backstory on this, I'm, you know, I'd like to hear it.
I thought that they're trying to more generalize the proposed land use areas as opposed to the specifics that are, you know, currently existing.
Is that what it was?
Because, you know, it, it's like you've got this big map with all these areas that we have no direct control over, but we're proposing that, you know, if, if, if we did own it, it would be, uh, it would say commercial, or no, forget that. Let's say, let's say it's mixed use, but mixed use is saying it could be residential, could be commercial, could be industrial, but it's, it's going to have some other connotation other than agriculture.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have the first map be our existing zoning map that we just approved?
Yes.
And then go to what we want to see changed, or we would accept in direct, as Andro just said, where we would accept some level of commercial or industrial that's not farm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because our, chapter one, we still said our priority is the land remains farm.
Yeah.
Or open space, and then some type of, like, low-density development.
I thi, I think where a lot of the confusion came in is that the proposed land use map brings in the green infrastructure.
Yeah, and that's, yes.
And that's what makes it very difficult to see, because you, you, you lose village boundaries and, you know, the other details disappear under the, the green and the shading.
Right.
So.
Well, I think, I think what the green is doing is trying to identify those corridors that either already exist or would not be considered for development, because a lot of it looks like it's, it's.
Streambed.
Connectors and things like that.
In those corridors.
And, uh, the like, because all it really shows here is agriculture, it shows, um, regulated green infrastructure. And then these conservation neighborhoods, which I, they're sort of hard to pick out. And then these little, little mixed use centers, basically, huh, that one's probably what, forty-seven and Beeth? And that one is Burlington and forty-seven and all. Which, to me, I'd say to hell with those and just take them out entirely, let the people on the other side of the line, if they want to make commercial, whoever's, you know, if that's when somebody else's municipality, that's one thing.
Well, that is ours.
It is ours, we're trying, we're trying to direct that.
Forty-seven is ours, and Burlington is ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we need to make it commercial?
Well, that's. Mixed use, mixed use implies a variety of, you know.
Uses.
Uses.
Well, what a variety of uses, I guess, that are, that are, I don't understand.
Somebody was, Andro was saying is, you want to, and Jim is saying, you want to direct development if you're gonna have anything that's not low-density residential when it changes from farm. You want it direct where you would accept and want to push developers, that's where you would accept something on forty-seven, that's a major state road. And we know the twenty-year plan for I dot is it's gonna be the connecting corridor to replace three fifty-five for eighty-eight and ninety, that's already on the table for the state to do that at forty-seven. So whether we want development to occur along forty-seven or not, it's.
It's already been identified, those nodes, those nodes have already been identified.
They have.
Yeah.
So we then as a village should pick and choose where we would accept some mixed use or commercial and where we would, to say we won't do it at all, i- is gonna be hard to, in twenty years from now, swallow.
Well, it would force anybody who wants to develop there to go to another community.
Or, but then you get the development and it's out of your control.
Exactly.
But it's either you want to keep it in your control, so you limit the damage it does to your semi-rural, Jerry. You're, you're forgetting though, I dot, we got our own ideas.
Sure.
No, but.
Once they do more.
But even if they do, if we don't define, if we don't define it and leave it sort of there, then the person after us, who has to deal with a, a question and has, doesn't have an affirmative answer, so at least if we have given some sort of defined definition. In other words, what I'm saying is, don't just take it out, don't just leave it out and make it disappear, that's not the right way to do it.
Because if you reject it, we will get another municipality to do it much more intensely than you would.
Well, if we, if we put it in our comp plan, then, then the state has to look at our comp plan and say, this is what the village wants. It's in their planning area, so this is where we should be taking our starting direction.
Now, would there be, uh, something in advantage of the, to the state if you said we don't want, um, we want absolutely no access kind of thing? I mean, that was the goal of Randall Road, it was not supposed to, it was supposed to be limited access, and of course, you know.
That's why, that's why they're looking at forty-seven.
Would, would, would it be possible to approach the state and say, look, we'd like to help you all out, have limited access, so you guys aren't overwhelmed, and lose the value of having this expressway, you know? And therefore, we don't want a lot of little businesses along there with, you know, in and outs and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, but Burlington or across this forty-seven and Lily Lake is already identified and being built up. The state's gonna want some of those nodes, it can't be, you know.
Elgin's already in control of that whole section of forty-seven.
Yeah, nor, nor gonna see whatever they want.
Well, that's why, that's why we have to define it, so we've got some control.
And they may not matter, is what I'm saying.
Irregardless, if it doesn't matter, but at least it brings, it brings somebody to the table.
And, and doesn't let the whole thing turn into Randall Road, because you've got, you don't say no, a blanket no, you identify two or three spots, and then the rest is.
Yeah, it's just, I'm just so used to being a cancer of, you know, you get one here, one here, and the next thing, no, it's a continuous.
But that's a bad intersection already, so they may move the road.
Yeah. Yeah, true. Well, yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of issues, what are they gonna do around Elburn? Are they gonna use Anderson?
So, I think there's gonna be a lot of movement.
Well, they were gonna use Anderson with the bypass, but now they built it up, they can't.
We're off topic now, whatever this is doing, so.
Just one quick thing, that, that's really the only area that we show, other than the town center.
There's a mixed use center.
No, it's also at Beeth and forty-seven.
Uh, there's four on the.
No, that's not ours, that's not ours. Beeth, that's ours.
No, but we identify it as a future land use, because you are allowed to identify uses, like one and a half, outside of your corporate boundary. Yeah, and that, and that's what the little red kind of circle.
But I would only do that if we think we're gonna have it. I don't see that ever being ours.
Which one?
Beeth and forty-seven.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I think it could be.
Why not?
I mean, Elburn's already almost there, so.
They've got a boundary agreement with Lily Lake that they won't go north of Beeth, but they can go to Beeth.
And you've got the fairgrounds cross, cross property across the street, they want Elburn. So I, I just, I don't think we'll even see that. And then you've got the other corner is a big developer on town, uh, town country, I believe, owns that four hundred acres on there. On the, on the Lily Lakeside. Because we tried, we, we looked at all the properties in Camden Township for purchase, and, you know, we talked to all these people over the years, and, uh, Town and Country, they want a lot of money for that.
Right, right now at Beeth, the northeast corner of Beeth and forty-seven, the signs up on it, four hundred fifty-five acres, it's probably.
Yeah, it's a big development, it's like old.
Well, but if you don't want that big type of development, you should do, like Chris was saying, in your planning area, put your, put your flag down to what you want it to be, so you're not passively letting it happen to you.
Right, or letting the county do it to us.
Yeah, everything, everything within our planning area, we should have some designation for, whether we eventually annex it or not, because there's overlap in, in these communities' planning area.
Well, and then Elburn or whoever does the development has to take into account which, what our comp plan said. So you should say something, don't be passive, because you'll get the worst outcome you, that'll go against semi-rural.
Right, right.
I, I would, just maybe to change gears here a bit, I would suggest, on the future land use map, that that greenway stuff is not really a land use category, it makes it confusing, it should just all be called open space.
All right, just, just like it is on the existing land.
Exactly, it shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be that different. And then for areas outside of our current corporate boundaries, that we'd like to see remain open space, or we have a strong feel it's gonna be open space, then we can, you know, color that, you know, take our little green pencil. you know, color that, you know, take our little green pencil, color green in. And, and, but I think that's just.
Saying all the squiggly lines?
Yeah, I mean, though, I think the whole, the whole cartography has to be redone, that, you know, with the roads and all that, I mean, it's just a little too confusing.
I just think they did that for like, okay, that's flood plain. It's probably, those green creeks, all the creeks are identified, I think, so they won't be built.
Well, that's open space. I mean, it's the broad category.
Well, I think those, those are what they were referring to as ecological networks.
Right.
I mean, we just call.
The connectors.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we honor this stuff.
I think we should take them out just so we can see the map.
Yeah, they'll be called open space. It'll be just one color.
We still have the green infrastructure plan, it's still there. It's, it's, that's, all, all that stuff is still, we're not getting rid of the green infrastructure plan, but just that layer of green infrastructure on this future land use plan just complicates it.
It doesn't.
So I think it needs to be removed.
Is it confusing or is it simply you say upfront, the green stuff is not developable? All right? So, so the first person, for the first person that looks at, the first thing he sees, wow, there's not a lot of developable land left in this particular area or whatever. So it's sort of a red flag right up front.
Yes.
That, you know, you can't just expect to go in here and see a hundred acres here and that it's all developable kind of thing.
But open space is defined as primarily undeveloped or preserved land use for parks, recreation, or other outdoor nature-related activities. It doesn't say residential development, it doesn't say commercial development, so if you label it as open space, you, it's, you've done that by this definition.
The elders aren't going to look at it.
No, but, but when they come in, you point this out and say, look, all the green is an open space area. Don't look at it.
We came up with a pretty decent definition of open space for the zoning ordinance. So I'll go back and review that. I mean, they, they can probably be almost exact, if not exact.
Out of our zoning code.
Yeah, I sort of thought of that before, because that was kind of.
Because, because, you know.
Developers only see what they want to see.
Correct. And I, I, all I'm saying is we don't, as I think old Commissioner Fredericks and Jim have been saying is, we label it as open space.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to identify it's a greenway, it's a, you know, it's, it's, it's ecological. It's open space. Open space is open space is open space. Open space is not developable, whether it's ecological pathway, whether it's a creek bed, whether it's a park, or it, it's not developable. It's just, open space is kind of a broader category maybe on the plan, rather than having more smaller categories on the plan to make it a little more confusing.
Well, I under, I understand what you're saying, but it still might be confusing because we actually have open space program. And these greenways are not part of that program. So somebody might get confused. That's the only reason I think it's designated.
So that's like where you're saying ecological network?
Yes. The, I think the problem is that, as Neil was saying, you've got green, you've got two, two shades of green in there that mean the same, that they're trying to mean the same thing, but they're different. Some are dedicated open space, and then you've got the undevelopable open space, and we should, we should either differentiate those two or take one out.
Well, I like, if you look at the existing land use plan, which basically shows the existing open space, that to me is clear and concise of what it is. I think that's what we should do. All right? This one becomes very confusing.
Well, is it confusing or is it just showing that that's the complexity of the community?
Because when you look at some of this, let's, when you look at the open space that is along sixty-four, very little of that is, only this little bit here has an easement on it at forty-seven, at this forty-seven and sixty-four, that is actually part of the open space program. Everything else along here is not, but it's an incredibly large wetland along there. See, that's just it. So really, you got, you know, in effect Lily Lake, you've got everything on the north side of sixty-four.
It's on here as open space, all right?
A little bit of it, a little bit of it.
Well, the majority of it is.
The other issue is we've asked the developers to save green space and green open.
This is the one that the township has an easement on it, but there's, in through here, there's, this is all through, so.
The US Army Corps doesn't like it built on it.
I, I understand, but so developers still, they don't, all move it. You can't.
I mean, they can say what they want, but if it doesn't get approved.
Without that, it looks like there's a lot of wide-open area. That is what my, my impression is when I look at that. It looks like there's big blank open spaces there for development or for whatever.
Oh, it's agricultural. It's agricultural, basically what it's saying, and that's what it is.
It's big blobs of open space that are labeled open space with a defined definition so that any developer that comes in, first thing is the developer's going to have to go through all of us for approval anyway.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, true.
And I, if I'm a developer, I'm going to actually come in before I even start and ask a couple of questions and see how it's defined.
Well, they like to build on cornfield because they know that's not wetland.
Absolutely. Logically, yeah.
It's not, I'm sorry.
It's not wetland. Farmers aren't going to build, put cornfields in wetland.
Because they lose crop every year.
It's not open space.
No, I mean farmland.
Yeah, farmland, right.
I mean, that's all listed here as a conservation neighborhood, and that isn't.
No, because this is the existing and this was the future. So that's, what I'm trying to do is to try to make the similar, you know, try to make these similar.
Pretty much, yeah, there's not so much difference.
So different. So you could, you could actually make this a conservation neighborhood. Or you said this is farming, and then you say, well, Alice, we want to be different. If it, if it's going to be developed, what do we want?
Well, some of that.
But you want open space, do you want conservation neighborhood? What, what do you want?
Well, some of that is aquifer recharge area up in that area, too.
Absolutely. But that's all, that's all within our, our ordinances, our green infrastructure program as well. It says, hey, if you're going to develop, you have to, you have to evaluate the green infrastructure program, uh, plan, and if there is water infiltration or groundwater infiltration, it has to be addressed. And that, that's, that's in our current, current documents. I'm not sure if it's zoning code or there after the ordinance.
Well, part of the trouble is the coloring. This, this one is worse than this one. I mean, this one actually is a little better, but these two colors, they should be different. And this, this should be lighter. I mean, obviously, that's awful dark.
I understand. It's, it's saying as a network got there, but it is just, if we're trying to say what the land use is and what the future land use is, that, that green infrastructure stuff just complicates it. I'd like to get rid of it.
Yeah.
All right? So who would like to get, and it's not the final thing, but who would like to get rid of?
Couldn't that be a separate map?
Separate map would be the best thing.
Yeah.
Because that way you, that way you see, you see the green infrastructure and it becomes a pure.
A different, a different layer of a map.
Right, but it's, but you see the green infrastructure map and you get an entirely different perspective once you take out all the development. And that, I think by itself is important.
You can just do a separate map.
Yes.
So we will remove that layer of green infrastructure from the future map, Jim?
Yes.
And just show it in the.
I think beyond the, the fact there might be a map, I mean, when you talk about the recharge zones, I think there's maps in the plan already that.
Well, I mean, this actual map does, it's called, it's called the Green Infrastructure Evaluation Zone, and that really is the infiltration area. You have to take a look at it. So that's what the evaluation zone right there is. So we'll have an existing, a future land use plan, and then what you call the next one, that is also a future, future land use with respect to.
But I know they had several overlay maps. I mean.
I'm just trying to simplify.
I know.
What's our existing land use and what's our future land use? And it should be fairly easy to understand. But I understand the context, I understand the context too, we're saying.
And defined.
Rather than being just all agriculture and a big target, saying, hey, I could put in my pulte homes or whatever in there. Say, okay, now if you do have that green infrastructure separate, just say, look, this is a, this is also a concern, and that you have to, these are evaluation zones, and I think the evaluation zones are a big part because it's a large area as well as the green infrastructure. So I think it's a suitable.
Yes, so somehow we've got to have that labeled, that there are overlay maps or whatever you want to say.
Well, that's the third map in the section.
Or be, or be the second, or yeah, third in the section or second future land use plan.
Yeah.
It'd be, it's like, yeah, two, like, future, one major one, and then one that refers to the green infrastructure.
See what you, Jim, can do with that.
Yeah. They can ask the engineering company, the GIS guys to do it.
Right, sure, we can, we can.
I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to do that one. I guess I would like, then, just for, so Jim has some guidance and direction as well. The current future land use plan has four purple mixed-use there, et cetera. And I know we had some discussion on them now. My initial would be to just add those four in, into the future land use plan, all right?
Okay.
Because we can always come back and revisit and hash out, okay? This is, we're going to review this again next time. But I think, let's just stick with that for the beginning. That's what I would think to do, and try to make the maps color-wise, everything look, you know, the same. So basically, you take two maps, or one map, and just.
Just make sure we clean it up. Because that's not available, right?
Yeah, remember, this is all two thousand twelve.
So that's not, so that's smaller.
Yeah, so that's two thousand twelve, so, so there, there are several changes. I know Jerry is pointing out some, you know, green areas that are not on the land use map and stuff as well, so. Okay. Do, Mr. Brown, do we need to change any of the categories or are we going to stay with the same categories?
Well, I think Jim's suggestion, the mixed use becomes mixed use commercial or commercial mixed use.
All right.
And then, you know, conservation neighborhood, if you want to have that, is on the future map. I mean, you could technically have it on the existing map because Fox Mill is kind of like a conservation neighborhood.
No, because the whole concept behind the conservation neighborhood is a, a new concept.
It's been around for a long time, Jim.
Right, but I'm saying it's new to the village. Fox Mill isn't conservation neighborhood as far as I'm concerned.
No, it's PUD.
No.
No, it's just a PUD.
I don't know. I, I would disagree. As a planner, I would disagree. I, that would disagree. As a planner, I would disagree.
That's the problem with gliders.
I would, I would disagree.
Stop trying to make Utopia.
It was, I think, designed as a, as a golf course, to conserve, they had smaller lots and the intention was to preserve this open space. The other way of walking, because that's a conservation site.
We do have beautiful.
Okay.
I mean, really.
All right.
You may not like it, I'm still saying you have to like it, but I think that was the intent, so. But we can leave it as whatever color it is. Yeah, if we can leave it as whatever it is on the current land use.
So if you're.
Pick on me all the time.
All right, so we're conversational at times, please. So as we're, as we're giving some direction to Mr. Brown, so on the existing land use map, right now it is agricultural, rural, residential is the large portion to the northwest, right? That's the large open area, all right? Do you want that as, to be listed on the existing as agricultural, rural, residential? Or do you want it more in the conservation neighborhood? Which, so that's the other thing. So, I mean, there is a strong, a strong penance to have and maintain that agricultural history and so forth. So if you just make all the agricultural stuff conservation neighborhood, I.
You're asking, you're saying to a developer, we're open for Fox Mill, and I don't think that's your intent.
So I'm kind of, I'm kind of leaning towards keeping it as agricultural residential, unless other people have other suggestions.
I think they were just worried about protecting it. But you're right, I may not, we may send the wrong message, too. Because we still would like to keep just ag.
Yeah, that's our first choice, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so then, let's, like I said, it's not final.
The trouble is, is that that section is all owned by one, since one person, the thousand acres up there. So, man, we should probably have discussions with them sometime.
Is it one person or a group?
A group, yeah. But it's all under one, under one umbrella.
So let's just keep that same designation on the existing land use map then, okay?
You want, I, I, I'll, I have a.
Keep the agricultural or residential?
I have a different view. So when I read, I read, and I can't remember where this came from, I think this may have been someplace in the document that I reworded. It says agriculture and rural residential is the current land use. I wrote, identifies areas that are primarily used for farm-related activities, but also includes lots with single-family homes. I know I didn't write this, where large areas of crops are cultivated or relatively large numbers of animals are raised and maintained for commercial purposes. I think what they were trying to do, and maybe this is the wrong assumption, but I think, you know, we, we had these five hundred some lots that were zoned farm that were actually residential. And I think they were trying to somehow acknowledge that, you know, they aren't the traditional farm and, but most of this was residential subdivision. And I think they were trying to.
I think, my, my, I could be wrong.
And I could be wrong, too.
My thing is, I think they had a farm and they sold five acres to their son. You know, the house, you know? And then you, five, maybe five to the daughter-in-law, you know? And then so that's, now it's, that's rural residential.
Because that was being done up until about, what, nineteen eighty-four, five?
Split off five acres and sell it, and then there'd be a house on it. But everything else around, it's all ag, it's all ag.
You still do that, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I would.
I think that was the intent of that.
Sure. So I would say just agriculture, just have a category that's, you know, it's under cultivation or used for raising livestock is agriculture. If it's just, if it's just a house, it's not, you don't have any plowed field or anything, I mean, now we can have horses, but I would just say that's, you know, residential. You know what I mean? I'd split those two out.
Okay.
I mean, it's essential that the tax assessor does. And not that we want to follow that, but I think it's just, I think it's a cleaner map. If it's, if it's something currently under, and I'm sure that's the way NIPSY looks, or NIPSY, God, that's an ultra, CMAP looks at it, so, God, go back. Yeah, I'm sure that's the way CMAP looks at it, too, is if it's under cultivation, it's agriculture. If it's, if it's just a single-family home on a big lot, it's just, it's just low-density residential, is what they would call it. So I would, I would separate that in the current land use map, and I'm sure when I go, if I can get something more current from NIPSY, from CMAP, I'm sure that's the way they have it broken out. And then we would just follow that, and then our future land use map would also make that distinction. Agriculture, we'd either have residential or conservation design.
We must be getting to the time you're starting to do a real Joe Biden on me.
Yeah. Come on.
Right, so let's, I think we've.
I'm going to trip when I get up from my chair, yeah.
I think we've hit the land use categories, I think we've hit the map pretty well, given good direction for Jim. So I think we can press on with the text. There's like about eight more pages to go, and we've got about a half hour left, so I think we can probably, probably through this.
Yes.
I'm sad. I just like to keep the wheels of progress turning.
That's right.
Jim, you had a comment there about, under the transportation, communication, utilities section there about differentiating.[1640.41] Differentiating, I think the difference is that privately operated versus municipally operated.
Okay.
So that, that answers, I think it would answer your question, that it's really, Wasco Sanitary District is privately operated, so that's not under municipal control, and that's why it's a separate.
All right.
Breakout.
We have one quick question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Do we allow in, in industrial? I don't, I don't see anything really on the map, other than.
We got research.
You know, like Richard said.
Yeah, the, the research and development would allow very light, very, yeah, stuff.
Like a shop, but not like.
I'm not saying it, it's, you know, whether we want it or not, do we allow it, I guess, in our zoning, that do we have to?
We do, but a specific.
It's on, it's wrapped up with commercial.
So if there is some light industrial.
Yeah, I think it's under research and development, and I believe that is, like, it's a light, light industrial.
Down in Wasco, yeah, Wasco. Well, I think that brings a point, Neil, out on forty-seven, on some of those nodes, do you wanna identify that as only mixed use, or would you let light industrial go there?
Research and development.
Research and development be those nodes instead of mixed use? Cause if forty-seven's gonna be this major connecting route of ninety and eighty-eight, you might have.
Warehouses.
Well, I hope, the warehouses are gonna be closer to ninety and closer to eighty-eight.
But you might get like, uh, these, you know, industrial, they're, they're the twenty-five or fifteen-hundred square foot condo units. Somebody puts like a, a detail shop in one, somebody puts, uh, you know, an electric, yeah, like my Wasco, I'm an electrician, and, you know, I run three, four-man crew, and I've got some shelves in my, in my warehouse, and I park my van in there. You're gonna get things like that, you know? We have them, like I said, right now, right in Wasco.
Yeah, but I think that still fits.
It's still commercial.
That fits in the mixed use, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, more, you know.
You're talking fifty thousand, a hundred thousand square foot warehouse?
Manufacturing.
Well, I don't know, about a hundred thousand, but something.
Where's there room to put that around here?
Well, light industrial could.
Yeah, I don't think there's room for it.
Well, forty-seven and purple.
It is spelled out in our zoning ordinance.
I would say on a land use map, like the, the, the area, I can't think of the name of it, along the Great Western Trail, there's that building, I think that's light industrial. I think on a land use map, we could identify it as, as industrial, light industrial, but our zoning is wraps it up.
Commercial or our.
Yeah, so there's gonna be some differences between the zoning and, and the land use map.
And the sanitary district.
Right, and I would say that, that that gets identified as.
The existing map, this one's core.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna build an industrial plant that's gonna run a hundred people in there when you don't have Wasco sanitary that can even.
Yeah, you don't have the water and the.
Right.
No, but it could be warehousing.
Yeah, like warehousing.
Five employees don't need much.
Amazon.
Data centers just need water, electricity.
Like warehousing.
Amazon drones, you know, that's coming.
All right.
Well, under industrial, I'm curious why mining would be in there? Are we just using industrial as a definition versus?
General definition.
Is versus, you know.
I don't know, maybe, yeah, I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have mining.
Well, mining, quarrying, rock quarries, that's.
Maybe that's, it's just a general thing. For us, I don't know.
Well, that's why I didn't know if it's necessary in that definition if it's not allowed. I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's the thing I always keep getting confused on. I'm told that if it's not in the zoning code, it's not allowed.
Generally speaking, that's true.
So that's where.
Generally speaking, that's true.
That's where, yeah.
You guys both just said two very generally speaking things.
Well, it depends on who your lawyers are.
Sorry, but I just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
It's just, it's just a general definition that I pulled for industrial.
Yeah.
You can remove mining, cause I don't think we have any mines, so, you know, you don't need to include that.
Yeah.
Well, technically gravel pits, which we have had in the community.
Well, we don't have any now, do we?
None at the moment, no, but. Along forty-seven, there are.
Yeah, yeah, farther south.
Farther south.
Further south.
If they find rock and they need to mine it, well, it's there, or not, but anyway.
All right. All right, so moving on, I think we've got, we've got that pretty well covered, unless there's anything else to add. Uh, on page seventy-two, cause there is no other page number on the, uh, there's a lot of hyloglyphics there.
Did we agree with all of Jim's red on the previous section there?
Uh, we're at the bottom of seventy-one, which basically talked about all the different categories, and I'm moving to the top now, um, how they describe each category. Agricultural, land-appropriate, desired housing density, parcel size. And then we get to page seventy-four, there's a comment from Jim, says, we should retain commercial as a land use on the future land use map, it should not be lunk of conservation. Now, yeah, okay.
So it's gonna be mixed, mixed, mixed use commercial.
Yeah, so I think we went over that. Uh, and then you're going through your redlining on, uh, development standards, let's see, all new development should rely on conservation development practice and using minimal payment. So basically, some, all right, so then you've got, uh, village development standard codes and ordinance should be supported, okay? And there's land use, you just redefined that, this is page seventy-five now, top of seventy-five with, uh, red line on there, just says, the land use and development decision shall foster economic resilience and need to make a consideration of financial impact. Yeah, you always wanna make it sure of the final financial impact to the village, so. Uh, page seventy-six, um, did you have a comment? Go ahead, Jim, go ahead.
I, I think it's still important to emphasize that, you know, most of the existing residential subdivisions, that the sizes of the lots and placements are all based on, you know, private well and septic, and I think that that statement needs to be included in there, cause that's really how, what's driven, you know, the current, uh, you know, size of lots and, you know, rural development here, and.
Yeah, so what page would you, or do you have a suggestion of a, of a location to put there?
This is on seventy-six, second sentence.
Seventy-six.
Where it says, oh, no.
However.
Lot size of most existing residential subdivisions, and something to effect is, you know, based on private well and septic, should be, you know, included, some statement that these lot sizes are based on private well and septic should be included.
Well, I, I agree with Jim on that, and I think we should put a place marker that the village has no plans or intent to ever develop a municipal water or sewer plant.
I think that.
But that, that would absolutely keep a developer from coming in and saying, I'll, do, what St. Charles.
I wouldn't say never.
Well, I, if you want to keep a rural semi-rural thing, that's how you do it. There's no, 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 uh, municipal sanitary plant. That's how you keep well and septic.
Yeah.
Would this be strategy goal, are we talking about? Are we, are we looking at, if you said page seventy-six, I think that's under strategy I-one? Is that what you're trying to add that in? It talks about using the green infrastructure plan, ecological networks and valuation zones.
That would.
Excuse me.
That would build on that concept.
Uh, so that's all about the green infrastructure. I-one is all about the green infrastructure, okay? So that's, that's fine. I-two is conservation-based approach into every proposed land use, and I-three is locate, prioritize, sequence, growth, and a logical and connective crashing, okay? And then I-four is additional planning studies, and six is be proactive with the village to cover the plan. I-five is update development standards. Okay, so, I don't see, so, yeah, so would you just add another strategy?
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I, maybe I gave the wrong page. On seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Top, top of page seventy-three.
Desired housing density.
Right.
For new residential neighborhoods.
Something in there that imply that, you know, it's being driven by, the size of residential lots is being driven by private well and septic.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
And the fact the village has no plans or intent to ever create a municipal.
The village has no plans to create a municipal service.
Hey, cause twenty years ago Burlington never thought they were gonna be trying to get an I E P A home to build a sewer plant to then have more development, I guess.
If you look at the second paragraph, it starts off, on, on page seventy-three, the second paragraph starts off, parcel size, access to roadways and other infrastructure, adjacent land uses, green infrastructure, and other factors will influence the specific planning and design at each site designated conservation neighborhood. So, I mean, that might be in that area, might be.
Good spot.
A good spot as well.
Yeah.
It's talking about parcel size, access, and under infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'd say, but then to say that the, that the limitations of well and septic and the, and then the lack of desire to build a, a municipal sewage treatment, or sewage treatment, or water treatment.
Sewer and water.
Sewer and water treatment precludes, or, you know, inhibits certain development.
Intense development.
And, and, yeah.
Yeah, what you said, Ralph.
Yeah.
No, I think that's, that's what you want to protect and not let a future, uh, group do what Burlington's trying to do, is to develop a sewer plant so they can have major development.
So Jim, on the recording, then, that was page seventy-three.
Yep.
Probably the beginning of second paragraph.
Yeah, I got.
Somewhere in there, I'll let you use your judgment, you know, will you want it to get to better place for it?
Yeah, okay.
If you don't have a plant that have a water and sewer plant, you develop a suspender.
Let's see, we got about fifteen minutes here, I think we're getting pretty close to the end. All right, so if we're pressing on after page, uh, strategies for land use, so we're in strategy I-one, I-two. I would just make a comment, Jim, since everything we've talked about tonight with the future land use map, if you look under strategy I-two on page seventy-six, it says there are three types of proposed land use designated on the future land use map. You might wanna just revisit that.
Yeah, I will have to, yeah.
Yeah, you have to revisit that because I'm just not sure if that's gonna.
Right, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm just, just with our conversation tonight, that might change.
Yeah.
All right, the top of, uh, strategy, next page, top of strategy, I-three, um, you said this is very similar to one of the goals listed above, and I do, the ones above are really green infrastructure and conservation design. This one's more about location prioritization and sequence, where a sequence growth is, a connected fashion, I guess, a contiguous, uh, continuity and existing infrastructure. So basically, don't put, you know, you wanna use the, the existing transportation facilities, you wanna have the village, do you have to build new facilities just to accommodate this, whatever it is they wanna make, so, I guess you could reword that, or?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I just, I just go to that, so, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think it really, I don't think it repeats it, I think it's basically talking about not, uh.
All right.
All right, um, then, I don't have anything till the last page, and I wonder if that last paragraph there, that just all gets removed? Inflammation strategy on page seventy-nine.
We have been removing those, but I, I don't know.[1662.41]